Good evening and welcome to the Coon Rapids City Council Meeting for Tuesday, April 7th, 2020. If you would please join us as we rise for the pledge. Are we going to the pledge, Josh? All right. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Please call the roll.
Councilmember Grischoviac.
Here.
Councilmember Kicker.
Here.
Councilmember Demmer. Councilmember Geisler.
Here.
Councilmember Johnson.
Here.
Councilmember Wells.
Here.
Mayor Cook.
Here. Thank you. Next item on our agenda then will be to adopt this evening's agenda.
So moved.
Second, second.
Motion by Geisler, second by Kicker. Is there any discussion or corrections? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And that motion carries. That actually worked. Should we do a show of hands instead for ayes, or should we continue with the ayes, do you think? Is that working? Okay, we're gonna go with the ayes. Let's see here. First item on our agenda then, item one is to approve the meeting minutes of March 17th, 2020.
I'll move to approve of the minutes.
All right, I have a motion by Johnson. Who is, who is the second?
Second.
A motion by Johnson, second by Wells. Is there any discussion or corrections? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? And those minutes are approved. We have one, two, three, four items on our consent agenda this evening. The first is to approve a service agreement with Alexandra House. Alexandra House is a nonprofit corporation that is Anoka County's only women's shelter. It provides a 24-hour shelter, support services, advocacy, educational opportunities to residents in the city and Anoka County. Alexandra House has made a request for financial assistance for the services it provides, and the council did appropriate $12,500 to the Alexandra House in the 2020 budget for these services. The service agreement reduces the party's wishes to writing. This agreement is for one year and can be terminated by either party with 30 days' notice. Should this contract be terminated early, the funds paid shall be returned by Alexandra House in proportion to the number of months the contract was not fulfilled. I almost said I believe that was the Johnson stipulation. So with this, we'll be looking to approve the city to enter into a service agreement with Alexandra House to provide shelter, support services, and advocacy to affected city residents. Next item on the consent agenda is strictly informational item only, and there is a corporate officer change at AMC Theaters Coon Rapids, 1610051 Woodcrest Drive, and that's literally just for information only. Next on our consent agenda is to, is actually for, item four on this evening's agenda, to approve the final payment to Blackstone Contractors LLC for Project 19-9, Burlington Park Bridge, and Dahlia Park Culvert Installation. So we'll be making the final payment to Blackstone Contractors LLC in the amount of $11,964.31 for Project 19-9, Burlington Park Bridge, and Dahlia Park Culvert Installation. And then we have item five, which is the last item on our consent agenda, and that's to approve final payment to T1 Zack Concrete Incorporated for Project 17-19 Sidewalk Gap Project. So this is approve the change order and the final payment to T1 Zack Concrete in the amount of $14,062.56 for Project 17-19 Sidewalk Gap Project, and that's our full consent agenda.
Your Honor.
Councilmember Kicker.
I make a motion that we approve the consent agenda.
Second.
Motion by Kicker, second by Demmer to approve the consent agenda. Any discussion or questions?
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Grischoviac.
Maybe just a point of order, we, we took the roll call and I don't think Demmer was mentioned on the roll call. I think he, right after the roll call, so we can, can we make that update?
Yeah, sorry, I was still muted, but I waved.
He waved, he waved. We took that as I am here. Okay.
No questions on the consent agenda.
All right, thank you. So we have a motion and a second on the consent agenda. Is there any other questions or discussion on that? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And that motion carries. Next is item six, which is a hold a public and assessment hearing to, as we consider Resolution 20-3 Sub 6A. Ms. Lenzmeyer, did we get any public comment for this one today? Any public hearing, people that wanted to speak or anything?
Mr. Mayor, yes, I believe Public Works Director Hammer is going to provide you with that information as part of his presentation.
Oh, all right, very good, thank you. Mr. Hammer, you want to take this one away?
Yes, thank you. I assume you can all hear me, okay? All right, let me share my screen. I have a little presentation, prepared by Mr. Hanson, as usual. He's done another good job on this. It's similar to what you see on most of our reconstruction projects. This is a joint effort with the city of Blaine. Project 20-3. Blaine is currently coordinated in this. On our behalf, we approved a joint powers agreement earlier this year. It's basically the north side of university extending up to what's Bengal Drive in the city of Blaine in front of Coon Rapids High School. So on an annual basis, we go out and we do road ratings. That's done throughout the whole city on a two-to-three-year process, but we always look at the worst of the worst and reevaluate on an annual basis. This is just kind of a rating system we utilize when we look at conditions of roadways. So this year, we came up with assessment rates, and those were approved earlier this year by council. So they're shown in front of you. The rates we're looking at tonight primarily are for the duplex townhomes. They're $27 a foot. As we move into, I'll get to a map later on, but on those assessment rates, there are several properties here. What we do is we take the front footage in front of those units. We multiply it by that $27 per foot, and then we divide it equally amongst all of the benefiting properties. Based upon the latest schedule last Friday from Blaine, we are anticipating this project to start in approximately July. As people get to look at what their assessments are, as Ms. Lenzmeyer mentioned, we did get one written objection. Staff will respond to that directly. They'll receive a letter, as well as a recommendation will come to council at the time we adopt those assessments to determine whether that should be upheld or not. There are three options to pay. Basically, option one is you can pay it in its entirety within 30 days of the adoption, which the tentative dates are shown here as option number one. You can also pay it before it goes to the county books, approximately November 15th, and you would pay the, the rate plus whatever interest is accrued in that short period of time. Or if people should choose to do nothing, it gets put on their property taxes and spread over a 10-year period. So here's just a quick review of how we compare to what other cities do from an assessment perspective. We seem pretty reasonable within this group. It's primarily just the roadway. It's actually all of just the roadway costs. We don't assess for any utilities. People would like to pay attention to these bright pink door hangers. They go on the front doors, so if people should happen to notice these, maybe they go in the side door in their garage, but pay attention to the front door. These give information about when temporary water shut-offs may occur or other access considerations if we're replacing driveways or curb in front of their homes. So please be on the lookout for those. We do also have some videos on the city website at that link on the engineering page. It kind of walks you through the whole process of what it would look like from beginning to end. So for those that are interested, we're always available. They can certainly call us, but if you'd like to see what that process would look like from beginning to end, you can go on and click through these well-done CTN videos. So again, this is the very northeast corner of town. It's shown in the blue box on the overall reconstruction map for the city this year. Zooming in, you can see Blaine High School on the east, and then those few units of multifamily on the west side of the roadway there, those would be the ones being assessed. And it's primarily the area that's shown in red because as part of the university reconstruction several years ago, that intersection was reconstructed back to 126th Lane. So that, that little segment up to 126th Lane will remain as it is. So here's the estimated project schedule. We are here tonight conducting the public hearing and assessment hearing, of which we did receive one written objection. The city of Blaine anticipates awarding the contract on June 1st, and we would be in front of you on June 2nd. That would be a regular council meeting to adopt the assessments and move that construction project forward, and then construction would start likely in July. But again, that's, that's being managed by the city of Blaine in cooperation with Coon Rapids. So the total breakdown of costs so far are estimated at $447,000, of which the city's portion is $254,000. These are all estimates. Once the project is bid, we will have actual numbers for you. And so the breakdown is shown before you. It's $176,000 out of the Street Reconstruction Fund, $60,000 out of the water system for some hydrants and valve replacements, and then $18,000 of the total $254,000 would be assessment costs. So that is the end of my presentation, Mr. Mayor, council. I couldn't stand for any questions that you would have.
Any questions of Mr. Hammer here? All right. Councilmember Demmer?
Yeah, so on that breakdown that you just had, I was a little surprised that Coon Rapids is paying more than half the cost. Is that primarily because of things like water, or is there something else going on?
That's correct. That, that is primarily due to that $60,000 in anticipated water main. There are other, no other utilities being done by the city of Blaine, so we're responsible for our utility work.
And that water mains not what goes to the school?
Well, yes, the water main along the roadway is, but we are not reconstructing that water main. We're doing the hydrants on our side of the roads, as well as the gate valves that run them. So there, I believe there's two hydrants on the west side.
Okay.
Does anyone else have any, anyone else have any questions of Mr. Hammer on this? Mr. Brody, how do we, how do we do the, do we just note that we have one written objection? Will that suffice for the public hearing, or what do we do?
Yes, once you open the public hearing, let's note that, that objection. And then I would also, just for the record, indicate, obviously, we're a little unusual tonight. You couldn't come in to make your, your appearance or your objection. So we did send out a second letter after our initial assessment letter about two, a week and a half ago to the affected properties indicating different methods in which they could file their objection. They could email, they could mail it in, obviously, which what they could have done before, letting them know that they couldn't appear today. They could call in. And then once we posted notice of this meeting, we also gave them options to participate. So just that we took some extra steps in this particular hearing because they weren't able to come personally to City Hall. We also posted it on our doors in case somebody did show up tonight, not knowing that we weren't actually meeting and gave them instructions on how they could still participate tonight by sending an email, calling in, things like that. So I just wanted to note that in case we run into some procedural issues down the road that we, we've done the best that we can under the circumstances to provide an open forum here. So I would just suggest opening the public hearing. I think we've already acknowledged that we've received one objection. We'll see if we have any additional ones or any other comments, for that matter, on the project itself, and then we'll go from there.
Mr. Mayor, I do have a follow-up question.
Go ahead, Councilmember Johnson.
Thank you. Mr. Hammer, how do we deal with assessments in situations where you might have multiple residences that are along a street, and then you have a school that's there?
Councilmember Johnson, members of the council, the, the high school is being assessed by Blaine. I, I didn't check with them on, on what their rate is for their, I think it was one of my slides, but we only assess for the portion that's in our city based upon our rates. They do what's on their side of the road based upon their rates.
Okay.
And we don't intermix, we don't intermix the funds. So once the total project costs are known, we pay 50% of the roadway and all of our utility costs out of our, our funds, they pay 50% of the roadway and whatever improvements they're doing out of their, out of their funds.
So just so it's clear to the citizens of Coon Rapids, there is going to be an assessment that relates to basically the other side of the street on University Avenue there. That'll be handled under Blaine's formula for dealing with assessments, and we're handling ours under our formula.
That is correct.
Thank you.
Is there any other questions of Mr. Hammer before we open the public hearing? Hearing none, we will go ahead and open the public hearing on Project 20-3 Sub 6A. Is there any additional comments for the public hearing? Hearing none, we will close.
Hold on, you're, Mr. Brody, go ahead. I know that, I don't know, maybe at CTN, do we know who the caller is? And if they're here, I show, that we show a caller online, and I don't know if they're here for the public hearing or just listening in.
Mr. Stemwaddle.
Hearing council, I believe that caller is Chief Brad Wise, so he would, as he's showing up as a participant, but is calling in. I don't see anybody under the attendees list, which would be the folks who had the link on the public side would show up under attendees, so.
Sorry about that.
I think we're okay from a public participation standpoint, as far as.
He's calling in to object. Maybe we could just hang up on him.
Yeah.
I, I. So, so I had a question about the, the written objection. Should we read it? I mean, before we vote, do we need to know what it is, or they just objected to it in general?
We haven't, we're not adopting the actual assessment tonight. We're just, they're objecting to it. We'll adopt them at the next hearing, and then Mr. Hammer will, I think, offer next, either a recommendation on whether to adopt that particular one or not. It also preserves their right to appeal it to the, to the court, or to the next step if they so choose. So tonight, we're not actually adopting any assessments. We're just ordering the improvement.
Okay, so it was an objection to the assessment, not an objection to the project?
That, that's correct, if I may. Councilmember Denver, council, it was a, it was basically a hardship request for the most part. So the same with all of our assessments that are contested. When we get to the point of adopting them, we will run through those again with you on which, which properties contested, what staff's recommendation is. Then you'll make your final decision at that time.
All right. Is there any other questions right now before we close the public hearing then? Hearing none, no objections. We're gonna go ahead and close the public hearing, and we're looking for a motion to adopt the resolution, and we're going to need a supermajority vote.
Your Honor.
Councilmember Demmer.
Move to adopt Resolution Number 20-3 Sub 6A, ordering the improvement.
Second.
Okay, that was a motion by Demmer, and I'm sorry, was it, was it a second by Kicker? Thank you.
Yes.
Any discussion?
I do have one, one question.
Go ahead.
So when we, we've recently made a change on our roads that we build them to a more robust depth than we used to. Do you know what the status is for this road? I, I would, I would hope it would be fairly robust with all the school bus traffic.
Mr. Hammer.
Councilmember Denver, members of the council, this will be in excess of what our typical roadway would be for that very purpose.
Great. Okay.
All right. We have a motion and a second. Any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? And that motion carries. You have your supermajority, Mr. Brody. All right. Item seven on this evening's agenda is to consider Resolution Number 19-12B Sub 9, awarding the contract for Port Riverwalk Phase 2 Streets and Utilities. The engineer's estimate for the project was $2,917,441.50. And based on the bids received, we're looking to award a contract to Northern Lines Contracting, the same contracting, the same contractor who is completing work in Phase 1 of the project. Once the contract has been awarded, the work will be scheduled to begin in late 2020. And Northern Lights Contracting, their bid was $2,875,029.25. Mr. Hammer, how is that project going over there?
Mr. Mayor, we.
Go ahead, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry, Mayor and council, we, we were able to get, get going a little bit on Phase 2. We just realigned Zilla Street, or the old slip ramp onto East River Road down to those apartment buildings. The utility contractor, this contractor, Northern Lines, will be starting next week. The hangup has been with, with the shelter-in-place order. We are not in a place that we want to start shutting people's water off with temporary shutdowns. So we're gonna try to work as diligently as we can, anticipating that time when water connections can, or water outages can, can occur. So for right now, we're gonna get started on what we can, and there'll probably be a slight delay in moving forward to try to get all this stuff going. But they will be out there working, starting next week, on some storm sewer work. We're gonna come up with a Plan B for some temporary water, if we need to do that for those apartment buildings, to try to keep this moving along as we go. So that's the latest update on the Phase 1, and we're excited to have the same contractor, so we can keep rolling right into Phase 2 as well. But the, the grading contractor is out there trying to wrap some things up as we speak, and they should probably be finishing their work within the next couple of weeks.
Excellent. Anybody have any questions on this? Otherwise, we're looking for a motion on it.
Your Honor.
Councilmember Demmer.
Move to adopt Resolution Number 19-12B Sub 9, awarding a contract to Northern Lines Contracting, Inc. in the amount of $2,875,029.25 for construction of Phase 2 Streets and Utilities to serve the Port Riverwalk Housing redevelopment.
Second.
Motion by Demmer, second by Johnson. Discussion?
Mayor.
Councilmember Grischoviac.
As part of the, the agreement with Sentra, I, I believe we paid for Phase 1, the grading, and that Sentra was to reimburse us with that at closing. I'm wondering if that's occurred, or being that grading is not done, maybe that hasn't occurred. I was just wondering on that. Maybe Mr. Hammer could help me.
Yes, Councilmember Grischoviac, council. At the closing, we were made whole on all costs to date, and then we escrowed additional funds for the estimated costs to complete. So we do have funds available to pay the grading contractor.
Okay, thank you very much.
All right. Any other questions or discussion on this? Hearing none, we have a motion and a second. So all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? And that motion carries. Our last item on this evening's agenda, item eight, is to consider Resolution Number 20-8 Sub 9, awarding the contract for miscellaneous trail reconstruction. Mr. Hammer, you wanna, this is, I think this is what we looked at last meeting, right?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, council, there are some various segments of trail in different locations. I, I did note in here Dahlia Park is not Dahlia Park. It's the trail between Crooked Lake Boulevard and Dahlia Street. We will upgrade that sidewalk to a trail. There are some segments within Wintercrest and Woodcrest as well. So it's just some miscellaneous trail maintenance that we packaged together and bid through a funding source on our Park Improvement Fund under Miscellaneous Trails. So good competitive bids, lots of bidders came in under bid, so we're excited to move forward, and T. A. Shifsky has done good work in the past for us. So we're, we're happy with what we received.
Excellent. Anybody have any questions of Mr. Hammer, Hammer, before we move this along?
I do have a question.
Councilmember Demmer.
Did you guys get a chance to take a look at Wintercrest and the water flow off the street? I'm, I'm just still a little concerned that if we don't have some drainage, we're gonna build a trail, and it's just gonna get wrecked right away.
Yeah, Councilmember Demmer, you had mentioned that the last time. We do have some maintenance items that we have to do out there, considering the situation we're in. We were really excited to get going on a, on an early spring. But yes, we are aware that we have it. It, it's not perfect. We don't have a lot of grade to work with, but, but we know what's there, and we'll work to address it.
So there, there wouldn't be any drainage built in under the, the new part of the trail, or any, or any way to get the water not to run down? It's not, not just the new trail we built last year, but after we build this trail, I'm worried it won't have a very long life if we don't do something, something there.
Unfortunately, with the grades we have, the water uses the trail kind of as its flow. And so as it runs off that into the grass, you start to get the railing along the edges. It's not ideal, but there's not really a lot of relief we can do to grade it out to different locations. But I'll, I'll look at the survey information yet again and see if there's something we can do.
Okay.
Any other questions of Mr. Hammer before we move this along? Somebody want to make a motion, or?
A motion. I'll move that we adopt Resolution 20-8 Sub 9, awarding a contract to T. A. Shifsky and Sons, incorporated in the amount of $130,351 for the 2020 Miscellaneous Trail Improvement Project.
Second.
Motion by Geisler, second by Grischoviac. Discussion? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Opposed, and that motion carries. Thank you. We don't have any old business or new business to look at, and we are up to the open mic public comment. Do we have anybody that's called in for open mic? Yes, we do.
Mr. Mayor, council members, we received an open mic comment from a Mr. Brad Booster, and that 11299 Robinson Drive. And I'll read to you his open mic questions. Number one, I noticed there is still a sidewalk gap on the north side of Coon Rapids Boulevard between Hanson and Egrit, and on the service road between 107th and Fresh Street. When will the section in front of the Old Willie's Bar be filled in? And number two, I noticed there's a fence around three of the city's outdoor warning sirens and not the remaining 12. And that's his questions to you.
All right. Well, very good. It's nice that you have him in writing because it'll be easy for staff to respond to him, that. Thank you. Good questions. Any other, anything else for open mic? Well, all right. So then let's move beyond open mic. We don't have any reports on previous open mics, and we are to other business. Mr. Stemwaddle, how are, how are things going around the city? How are, how are things rolling along?
Thank you, Mayor and council. You know, I would say overall, things are going very well. We've all had to adjust pretty quickly to new ways of doing business, and you know, there's been a few small bumps in the road, but for the most part, I think staff and the public have adjusted to this new model of service. And just as a reminder, city buildings are closed right now, except for the police department is open. Their normal business hours, 7:00 AM to 4:30 PM. Otherwise, most services if, that people would use in a database are still open in one form or another, either by phone call, email, online. We've gotten creative in places like building inspections and are doing inspections by FaceTime or other methods. If we need to, we can't do them by photo. So as I mentioned, we've had to get a little creative with, with how we implement these services. But actually, it's, it's working pretty well since it started now a couple of weeks ago. So with that, just a reminder as well that we are still under a city declared state of emergency, and I know Chief Wise is on the line. He can provide you an update from the police perspective. We are also under the governor's stay-at-home order, and there have been a lot of questions and comments and concerns in the community, of course, about things they're seeing in the community, concerns that they have. And it really does run the gamut in terms of what those concerns are. I know as a staff, we've heard a number of questions about park use, buildings, even things like the disc golf course, as maybe the residents are seeing people gather there in larger numbers than are expected. Expected through the governor's order and as the chief, uh, can attest to, this is primarily a voluntary order. You know, our first objective is education and voluntary compliance, um. We, we really aren't looking to go out there and enforce. Every, each and every small situation that comes up, we don't have the resources to. Do things like that. And so we're really trusting the public to use their best judgment, whether it's at our parks or, uh, any other facilities. Um, throughout the city. Uh, I will remind folks to visit our website for the most up to date information. About building hours and services and, uh, events that are going on or aren't going on at this point in the community. There's an ongoing list there that they can visit. And at this point, essentially everything through the month of May is anticipated to be canceled. Um, it's a fluid situation. I imagine there'll be more cancellations as we move forward. Uh, but we're trying not to jump ahead too far until we have the best information available to us, um, as we go ahead. Um, a couple of other things that I was going, um, to mention, uh, as you can see tonight, where. We've moved city council meetings online. This is our first official council meeting. We did have a work session last week that was also available to the public. And I expect for the month of April at a minimum that this is how we're gonna operate. Uh, there's a council work session next week. It'll be under a similar format as this one, as well as the regular council meeting on April twenty-first. Um, so for those folks at home that are interested in participating, you see an agenda item, you have a question on, certainly can call us ahead of time. We can get you those answers, but if you want to participate, you're able to do that. Uh, there is a link on our city website when you open up the agenda. Can also contact the city clerk for more information, whether you want to call in via phone. Or online, this is a Zoom meeting platform and we'll give you the link to, uh, attend the meeting as an attendee. And you'll, you're able to raise your hand, um, literally and figuratively in the, in the, uh, Zoom app if you want to ask a question. Uh, things of that nature. And so to the extent possible, we're trying to find different ways to. Maintain that inclusive nature from a public perspective in those areas that we can. Um, and as we move forward, we haven't made decisions yet about the meeting formats for May. Um, a lot of that, of course, will depend on state guidance at that time. As I mentioned, the, uh, stay at home order is in effect through the tenth. But I think we're all expecting here in the next day or so that the governor will update that order in one form or another. I know he's having conversations about, um, you know, what. Various restrictions to include in that order, things that maybe can opened up a little bit, maybe other things that get further restricted. Uh, but we're really anticipating that next order, um, and how that might affect operations here through the end of the month. Um, and then I'll just mention for, uh, council's benefit. That we, with that work session next week, staff will also give you an update on some of the internal operations and. Things that we're trying to anticipate as we move forward here in the next several weeks. Um, as well as we have, I think, three other, uh, topics that are on that agenda as well. So I think that's, oh, one final thing, if I may, um. Obviously, there's a lot of concern for the business community in Coon Rapids. And we've compiled a lot of information on our city website about resources for businesses that, that they can look into. Um, I would also suggest businesses look at the Chamber of Commerce websites who, again, have compiled a lot of great resources. On assistance programs and things of that nature. All the way down to our communications and our economic development team did a terrific job. Last week, putting together a list of restaurants and takeout services and places that are open. And, uh, they take a fir-, they took a first crack at it. They got some feedback, uh, as you would expect, the other places that were open and updated that immediately a couple of days later. And it's a, a living list, and so I encourage people to go out there, take a look at our list. I know some of the chambers have done similar things. And try to, uh, you know, give business to those local, uh, community businesses that are, you know, having a hard time right now, to extent that you're able. Um, so with that, I will, uh, echo us the floor and I think Chief Wise also had some updates if I'm not mistaken.
Uh, mayor, council, this is Brad Wise. Speaking, and I thought I'd just dovetail onto what Matt said. First off, I would make, recommend two primary sources, the sources that we use to stay updated. Uh, because they're excellent up, they're excellent sources and they don't get mired into, you know, news media distractions. And those two so, sources of information are Minnesota Department of Health. Which has a COVID nineteen section and it includes a situational update. Section, I refer to that many times a day myself. It gives update on statistics. On the progress of the virus and how it's being treated and the success rate at treatment and so on. Um, I can't recommend that website enough. Again, Minnesota Department of Health COVID site. The second, uh, most important site for us is the governor's office, the. State of Minnesota Governor's Office maintains website. That updates or provides continual updates to the executive orders. And I'll just say a couple of things about the executive orders. It was the first executive order that closed some businesses in the state was twenty dash oh four. And it very specifically laid out those businesses and then, and I know you remember it's restaurant and bars and, and facilities like that. Where social distancing just wasn't possible. Um, the second order that we rely on is executive order twenty dash twenty. And that's that so-called stay at home order. That order is updated almost daily as, um, essential services are added to the list. And it's, in part, it's advocacy on behalf of certain businesses and in part. It boils down to, um, essential services or services that are, are later learned to be essential. And I'll give you a good example of one of the changes that just happened yesterday because it keeps cropping up. In nine in one calls for service to the police department, but it. Uh, specifically refers to places like Joanne Fabrics, and I know this has come up to a bunch of different council members. Is that the Centers for Disease Control. At least is making a loose recommendation that people make their own face masks. And then wear those face masks while out in public. And of course, it's not to prevent, uh, you from being infected, rather it's, it's sort of a, uh. Uh, the purpose is to provide extra trust for other people around you. It's to prevent you from infecting others. Um, so obviously it's an important issue. Um, that's very timely related to Joanne Fabrics, because, um, when I'm out in public myself and I'm sure you no doubt have the same experiences is that. More often than not, when you see somebody in public who's wearing a mask, as is recommended. They're wearing some sort of surgical grade mask, either an N ninety-five mask or some other what we call loop mask. Which is those, uh, which are those medical masks that you see like in, um, that surgeons, surgeons might wear. Um, and the reality is the national shortage of N ninety-five masks and surgical grade masks. Is real and is continuing and the message needs to be loud and clear. That, um, that people, if they come across those kinds of masks, should be looking for a place to donate them. Uh, most importantly, hospitals, Alina is still accepting donations for those kinds of masks. Um, but more importantly is to not try to purchase them so as they do get found by other. Um, either hospitals or public safety entities that they have the opportunity to buy them. And I'll just say the status update of the police department is that. Frankly, we're, we're operating as normal, um, except for the way. We respond to calls for service that we're always mindful of social distancing. We are responding to all. Calls for service and, and, uh, the situation is normal. The reality for us, however, is that we have about a hundred total. N ninety-five masks, which are those masks that prevent our staff from getting. Sick in the event they have contact with somebody who's carrying the virus. Um, that supply won't last very long, because we, we are still having to go hands on with people. Unfortunately, there are still people out there that are committing crimes. Um, we are still having to arrest people and incidentally, then again, I'm sure you've noticed when you've been out on the road is that, um. Uh, the driving habits of people who are out on the road have deteriorated significantly. And we in Coon Rapids are still enforcing, uh, traffic laws. Unfortunately, it's got out into the public realm. That other law enforcement agencies are choosing not to do traffic enforcement, which has subsequently led to freeway speeds being. Outrageous at times, but, um, I just want to pass on to the motoring public in Coon Rapids who might be hearing this. Please be mindful of, of, uh, traffic statutes and be mindful of your speed. Um, God forbid we have other loss of life over carelessness and driving. Um, when we're trying to deal with this virus situation. So, um, with that, I'll, um, I'm available for any questions if you have something that's on your mind, council.
So chief, are, are we, you said we had a hundred masks. Um, should we be trying to find another source for masks? Is that what you're saying? I mean, how many do you think we should have?
Um, Mr. Mayor, council, is that that's what we have in our stockpile now is that we, and that's just Coon Rapids is, is that. Um, we expect that that will last thirty days. Um, that said, is that we share resources within Oka County. And we are always working with the state and should the situation become more critical as far as masks goes is that. Um, we're hoping to have avenues through official sources to be able to supplement the numbers that we have.
Okay, thank, thank you.
Hi, your honor.
Councilmember Decker.
Uh, I, I had an interesting conversation today with somebody who wanted to wear cloth masks. Um, but was worried about, uh, wearing a mask into, uh, an area of business like a gas station. Um, because you know, that's. Traditionally, if you're wearing a mask into a, a bank or a convenience store, you're gonna get yourself into trouble. Um, so I thought I would just throw that out to Chief Wise. If there's any best practices, the mask wearing public who are wearing a cloth mask. Uh, should follow to make sure they don't arise any nervousness on the part of, uh. Law enforcement or the, the workers at a business like that.
Yeah, councilmember Decker, um, uh, yeah, actually I, I read some newspaper articles regarding that. Today, uh, also, and, um. I would suggest that the new world order has made the wearing of masks pretty commonplace and I don't think the suspicion is gonna be raised of anybody. Um, like a bank or something like that when a person walks in wearing a mask. Um, you know, that said, we're, um. You know, I'd, I hate to say, make a statement like this, but the, our crime numbers have gone down significantly. In the last couple of weeks, apparently even the criminals are taking social distancing and stay at home orders seriously, so. Um, we're happy about that particular, uh, circumstance. And, um, you know, just know, peo-, people shouldn't worry about that sort of thing. Your personal safety is of paramount importance. And with banking or any, any function of life that you have, that if you can do it online or by telephone. Or somehow without going somewhere, that's the smart thing to do just for your own wellness.
Good points, good points. Any other, uh? Any other business? Wow, all right. I would, I would encourage people to just take a breath. We're gonna get through this. The numbers are looking good right now. Um, I would like to, I, I keep a reminder that that old be.
You, you got muted.
Mayor, you muted yourself, I think.
All right, I moved, I moved a keyboard and I, I think I put it in a bad spot, but. Um, I'm not sure where I got muted, but I, I, I guess I would just. Encourage everybody to know that we're going to get through this and, uh, and we're going to be fine and to, it, it's. That old bewitched episode, um, where the, the recurring theme was always get away from the window, Gladys. You know, just relax, um, things are gonna be fine, so. Um, I, I was, I'm encouraged to see the way people are supporting our local restaurants and businesses as they can. They've all been making themselves, um, ways of delivering the food safely. Um, that's been good. I just saw today that we have another one opening on Thursday, you know, that, that's the list the city put out. It's been a very good tool and, uh, now even, even Pappy's is opening on Thursday, so. A lot of, a lot of our restaurants are open for, open for business. Um, all right, any other business to come before this council this evening? It's holy week. It's a really interesting holy week, I'll tell you that. Uh, councilmember Decker.
I was just going to move to adjourn.
Second. Okay. Motion by Decker, second by Wells to adjourn, all in favor signify by saying aye. Aye, and we are adjourned.
Good night, everyone.